Okay, good evening, welcome back. We are back in public session and our first item on the agenda tonight is a discussion of the Public Health space base with the county commissioners. I'd like to recognize and welcome our county commission, thank you. Uh, we would really like for this conversation to take place as sort of a round table. So I'd like to invite the commissioners up, we'll bring some chairs and let's meet in the front of the room here, please.
Will you take your mics down, please? Yes. Just spread them across the table?
Yeah.
ours?
Yeah. I'll sit, oh, Tanger, I'll sit.
Are you staying or are you going to walk?
If you can have a little.
If you may. Okay.
How do you feel? Good design, good there.
Music for Paris, guys. Do you feel like we're surrounded?
I am. I've had a wash.
Okay, so, um, I guess I'll kick off the conversation tonight. Welcome, we're happy to have you in our meeting. Uh, we came with a presentation last week, Mr. Chairman, of four options that we felt were viable options to address the transfer agreement. Um, since that time, we have been fortunate enough to receive another option, a fifth option that we feel is very, very viable. And that is a generous offer by the town of Pindale to fully renovate and allow the hospital district to enter into a long-term lease agreement with the town of Pindale to place public health into their facility, which would satisfy all of the terms of the transfer agreement. So we'd like to throw that out there as a fifth option. One that we look very favorably upon as a board, number one, because the town of Pindale has been a great partner with us in the past. Um, they continue to be a great partner and we're very appreciative of their offer to make that property an option for us. So, that in conjunction with the other four, um, the, the second one that we feel is probably the best viable option is the 317 Faler Avenue property in Pindale that currently houses a private business. So we have those two options that we feel are primary coming from our direction and we'd like to hear what your thoughts are.
I mean, I believe our attorney came forward with a proposal uh, for you, presented to your attorney probably fifteen minutes ago, that would be leaning towards your second option.
Can you talk us through that proposal because we've not had any time to review that?
Sure.
At all.
Clayton, would you care to? Sorry, I wasn't aware of that. Okay, that's good. Good afternoon, everyone. Both chair persons. It should be made. That basic right here would be that's the 317 Faler building and the property legit lies in conjunction with, or should I say, in exchange for that property, building and property and the raw land to the south of the sublet center, just for convenience sake, I will call it the old Trader's Road. South back grass person to the south, so in exchange for those two parcels, the county would relieve hospital district of the requirement in the transfer agreement to provide space to productivity. The county would relieve the hospital district of the requirement to provide space for vacant services. County relieve the hospital district of the requirement to remove public health from its temporary location into its permanent location whenever that time may be. County take that piece of property subject to the lease of the tenants that are in there. County would also relieve the hospital district of the requirements for day-to-day maintenance thingy, uh, but would not be responsible for fixture replacement or doors, windows, mechanical, um, or storm. And term with that would be, or a condition like that is that public health would be able to remain in temporary space as long as necessary, whether the county either renovates that building at 317 for public health or builds a new building in full clock. And the county would pay seven million dollars a month to offset utility costs in that current temporary space, there would be no inspections. So providing title insurance on both properties. Um, and any other remaining terms, I mean, any other conditions in the transfer agreement would remain, those being that the county would retain the option to purchase the building known as the sublet center, you may have had hospital district work to put it on market. And then, of course, the rovers and hospital districts no longer is again.
Uh, Clayton, I believe also, um, public health would intend to take the generator and cabinets?
Yes.
Correct?
Those are, those are currently on, but that's property of, that would be part of the move.
But the county would be responsible for moving them?
All, all move costs.
Okay. Okay. So I just want to recap a little bit, so the transfer agreement requires six thousand square feet and then there's a list of things um, that were required to provide, and if I understand, the county's proposal, proposal is um, in order for us as the hospital district to get out from underneath that, those requirements for public health, the county commissioners have demanded the proactive building or the 317 Faler um, with the grass lot with it, right? So there's the building and the lot on that one piece of property and the grass lot that is south of the sublet center, correct? So two properties.
Those are.
Okay. All right. And my understanding is if the hospital district was to agree to this, that the county would take the 317 Faler building as is?
As is.
No inspections, okay? Okay. And so do I understand it then that the county commissioners tonight are not willing to hear out the proposed, the other proposals by the hospital district?
That's a question for them. Right now, this is the, this is the, this is the this is the proposal with Saint Paul is that they may, if I can't speak for, well, they're not there to listen.
Here's, here's why I'm asking, um, at the county commissioners meeting, you and I discussed what the deal was or the agreement was, right? To people that matter to today. And the agreement was that the county commissioners would attend the hospital district's meeting and listen to the hospital district's proposals. Correct? And, and all in, in meantime, hanging on to that $2.6 million still, correct?
And that, that we had all the term pocketing necessary to actuate the approval about our turn night uh, and a check to be prepared already.
Okay, so do I understand that statement to mean then that the county commissioners are ready to release the $2.6 million regardless of what um, pertaining to public health?
Not regardless.
Okay, can you expand on that or explain that a little bit?
So as long as everyone literally at the table can come in and agree on where we are headed, whether that be the proposal that the county has, has made, or in the event that following the presentation, if you all want to make that presentation, in the event that they change their mind and say they like wanting better, as long as we're all on the same page with a route moving forward, then yes, they're ready to to vote on that answer and have that check ready to online.
So that.
As soon as Jaren can have it. I know, I mean, that's, you know, come here. As long as we can, because don't, like, talk about, you don't begin to see not having the actual pen and paper tonight, because that's probably not possible. But as long as everyone's yeah, on record, everything else, we have a place, we have a destination in mind, then that gets released.
So the 2.6, I'm just wanting to be clear on what it is that my clients are being asked to consider, the 2.6 is tied to the hospital district coming up with, well, the subcenter piece, the raw land, and the 317 Faler?
Or another option, as long as everyone's on the same page.
Okay, okay.
Because, yes, they're here at the meeting and if you want to present other options, they will take that. They will, here, we're just letting, I'm just, we're like, we're relaying what they had coalesced around as a plan and what they would like to see.
Okay. Do you guys all understand the terms that have been proposed by the county commissioners?
We may be in an association.
We do say it properly. We didn't make any decisions.
Well, but we, well, yes, pretty well verbalized by people, we're not even going to see, but we can see them.
You mean during executive session, you made that decision?
We didn't make any decisions, that's what I'm saying.
We had, yeah, Beth took that option and I think she just said. I, I think it's important for you to hear our presentation and the option at hand. We think it's a viable option for public health. It would meet all of the requirements and we feel like it's the best option for use of taxpayer dollars, which is what we're really all here for.
Should. And Pindale's office, you guys are getting in on that?
Weeks with the hospital district between the town of Pindale and the hospital. The town of Pindale has offered to make the renovations necessary for us to be able to meet the terms of the transfer agreement.
Ms. Maxwell, do you mind bringing up the, um, floor plans that Tonya emailed to you of the town proposal? You have that? It's just something's age.
So as you can see, this memo has been prepared, this mental and these plans have been prepared by the town of Pindale um, in full support of the town council, the mayor, everyone who sits on that council. Um, and it has been prepared in order, in partnership with the hospital district, really. So at current, uh, clerical staff is on the right-hand side of these plans and the town of Pindale has made arrangements, if we are able and interested in moving forward with this plan, to shift all of their clerical staff to the opposite side of the building, which is currently empty, unoccupied, unrented, um, unused. And in order to go in and renovate the property on the right side to make it, to meet all of the requirements, the ADA requirements, um, the conference room, the office space, everything that falls under the requirements of that transfer agreement per public health, uh, ask. And they have made it clear that they are willing to do so at their cost at present and with the understanding that the hospital district would move forward under a long-term lease with the town of Pindale. This building is currently sitting unoccupied largely at present, so we feel like this is a really good option for public health. Other questions?
Say, what is an agreement, how long?
We, we haven't entered into terms yet with the town of Pindale, but they indicated it would be a.
I would say it would, uh, cheap up the maintenance on the building, should the building need replacing, if there's they're willing to continue to do rebuild whatever it takes.
I think we would have to work out those terms with them, but they've made it clear for the immediate future that it is available.
Mr. White, fully knowing that the transfer agreement, that onus is on the hospital district, right? So it's, it's not us committing, the city or the town to lead, if you feel that's on us, given the way that transfer agreement reads, this option is just, like, here, here's the option, right? Here's, here's a great option, um, that helps the town of Pindale, it helps the public health, like, we get in a beautiful, brand-new space, we'll remodel at the cost of the hospital district to pay the lease and then we will work out the terms of the lease that will cover everything in the transfer agreement, maintenance, you know, whatever it might be. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay. So that does not go back on the county, that would remain on the hospital district, just this would be an option to find um, uh, an acceptable place for public health.
And you guys would be willing to take on the burden of housing public health or, you know, some insurance?
We already assumed that obligation since 2022.
But we do have options of the transfer agreement to take that burden off you guys if you're all right.
You have made that offer, but it also comes at a cost of properties that are assets of the hospital district right now.
Back to you, another option, would we only take the Faler property and pull the other property out of the, out of the offer, does that make it more appealing to you guys?
It would certainly be more palatable to myself, but I can't speak in front of my board of commissioners.
So it's our understanding tonight, Mr. White, that the purpose of this discussion is to discuss, do we continue under the terms of the transfer agreement by coming forward and providing a space that complies with all of those terms? Or do we come to a new agreement, right? And the new agreement would include, like, the 317 Fowler or what have you, but with that would mean that the hospital district is no longer, uh, responsible for public health, like, those are the terms that we're here to discuss. And I think that the big balance right now is what's best use of taxpayer money, right? You guys are here with taxpayer money as well as the hospital district, like, it, it's, you know, the same resources. So we're just trying to figure out, like, what significant terms, you know, I mean, this is, these terms are pretty intense, frankly, for a public health facility and we're trying to comply with that, given that that is an agreement that we intend to.
We still have an agreement with the state that we will make sure the public health is housed in Pindale long-term policy, right?
Correct, so I've read the agreement that you had with the state, Clayton provided that to me and it just merely says you provide them with with housing and that's, that's what this would satisfy, whichever option you guys come up with. Yep.
Us partners, three-way partnership, basically, us, you, Pindale.
Good, yes.
And just as a reminder, the county has the final on location.
Yeah, we're well aware of that, yeah, we're well aware of that and the liquidated damages provisions and all that's in this transfer agreement, yep. This is an effort to try and figure out if we can come to an agreement together, anyone's best.
And we're getting this, this scenario with veterans, that would be part of this agreement.
Absolutely. They're implementing space for veteran services in this facility. That's actually how this conversation began, so.
Oh, that, I'm going to ask a question. How many of you are in this board of the faculty, walked, even at quarter, which is a good thing to talk about?
I have.
One of you.
And then I'm.
Okay, so in these other years, James, I would have had trouble side to side now that always that you want to give away, not give away, but make the transfer. So there would be some, in my mind, there would be some real issues with ADA complacency there without making a major, major overhaul. Just even now, the offices about three times the size we street to, together, most of it is redone. They're not very big at all, concentrated and non-existent. Uh, so that would be those major, major patterns, I think, point on my, I've had of Pindale, they're not very big, period. And as far as, as far as people have and privacy in there, the last time I was in there, you hear a person come in, money in the floor, you know, pulling up, so there's some issue there, privacy issues. When we spent the last hour in there, I at least had no idea that you were talking about this option, so communication has been very bad.
Mr. Vickery, your attorney has been informed of this and it's, it's up to him to get that to you.
Well, I can't disagree at all, but I've we spent the last hour in there trying to put together something based on what we had understood. You folks here were commendable to with the proactive buildings, and that's what we tried to work with, was that, period. So, you, you know, there needs to be communication, more than just I left two emails for that young lady there, of which I never got a return call, that's neither here nor there, I can tell you, communication.
I called you back some days ago and I left you on it, but I didn't hear about it.
Yeah, but it's been short, that's all I can.
I'm sorry.
So what, what I'm saying is, if we're going to go back through this, you know, you know, personally, I'm prepared to come in here, sit down, put something together, satisfy all parties, write me out a check so you go down your business, we go down our, but now it would appear to me that we're going to have to start over, start from one, because I'm not going to jump all the way until we've had an opportunity to what do they call the term, do, do diligence on this? Because quite frankly, I'm tired of everybody and, not everybody, don't call me by my name, not give a name, but I'm tired of, we need, let this leave them, period. It's not good for the community, it's not good for the hospital, certainly not good for the commissioners. So if we're going to go, and this obviously is what you're going to do, you're not going to do anything particularly on construction, I'm doing, wasting a child, a really good option here, divesting you of a lot of the responsibilities that this transfer agreement would make, we're trying, we're trying to be as reasonable as possible. You folks can go, I can, so you can take 2.6, 2.7, whatever, I'm ready to listen to, we go back to business. What we, at least I am, I'm prepared to put this issue to the table.
Mr. Vickery, just so you know, it was very clear with your attorney that the purpose of this meeting was to discuss our options and that's what my clients have been working towards, I've been speaking with Clayton numerous times. Clayton, please keep me honest here, that we are going to propose different proposals to you, being the 317 Fowler. Then we came up with the, we were just approached by the town of Pindale and I passed that on as soon as Clayton and I, um, connected. And the intent is, because I can't contact you because you're represented by council, to get that to you folks, just like I communicate with my clients. So this is all very new, please also keep in mind, Mr. Vickery, that this term is given to me. So it's, it's a two-way street and I think my clients are here in good faith to try and find exactly where we can meet, right? And what the best options are. So the, um, memo that Mayor Murdoch has provided says we will remodel the building to address privacy, anything that's required for medical facilities. Um, it has to have two ADA compliant bathrooms, it has to have a conference room, and we have the full list from the transfer agreement and we fully expect to comply with the terms of the transfer agreement in providing that space.
Okay, well, I've spoken my piece and so, uh, for me now, I'm prepared to go back and help, move in with the mayor, like, to get a tour done, talk with him, see exactly what they're going to give up, what they're prepared to give up there. And if there's a lease, long-term lease, it's going to be, which I guess it's not, because they're not going to do that. There's, I'm planning on going, they're going to need office space at some time, I would say. And, and which, which is another issue, all the workers that filed through that thing, now, there's a bunch of them. I mean, how you, how you envision keeping somebody that comes in there out of the street and just come off water and keep him isolated for somebody that's in one of the blocks and can't have issues a few minutes? I don't see that happening.
There are multiple entries, there are multiple entries and it could be kept.
And I think that would be, the main entry is going to be like down the middle of this thing.
No, you walk into a lobby and it goes lower, yeah.
I've been there multiple times, I know exactly how it works.
Just so you folks know, if we were to go with this option, the lease agreement would be between the hospital district and the town of Pindale, okay? And we would do as long-term leases we possibly could. And then the discussion would be, okay, what if something changes with the building? Or what if, you know, they want to use it for something different? It's a tenant landlord situation, that onus would still fall back on the hospital district. Then the hospital district would have to find another permanent solution for public health. But the intent would be to have a long-term lease as long as we possibly could. But that responsibility is not on the county, that would be on the hospital district to fulfill under the transfer agreement. Does that make sense?
You know, that, that part can be, I've heard, I've heard already this discussion, where we're going to basically, we're going to approach those issues with their eyes. Well, that's okay in some instances, this is not in the case. That facility is a public health, wherever it's at, needs to be set up there, so public health is what they want, public folks, wherever they, uh, uh, that help, that public help is to everybody and it can't be a help or scope.
Let me just draw attention to one fact, Mr. Vickery, and that is that there is already a public health office residing in this facility. The regional public health manager has office space in this facility.
That's a state entity, it's not connected to the county, that's true.
I'm just trying to draw attention to the fact that there's a county health-related or a state health-related office currently in this. Making it available to everyone in the public, is the point.
I guess personally where I'm at, we came tonight to Congress as a board, I think we chose to we, well, we choose what we've discussed, moving away from public health under your watch. We like to get it under the county. I certainly will, we remove that one piece of land and we take the Faler building, that, probably associated with it, and we go on. Swear.
You did, Mr. Bradley.
That's me sitting here and listening to, not been out in the business yet, but that's the, that's the cross here, like, who wants to own public health? Do you guys want to own public health or really want to own public health? It's in the agreement, we're all trying to, all this agreement, that doesn't sound like you're very happy with and maybe we're not super happy with either. So we need to follow, we need to figure out what the situation is. And in my opinion, the way the state statutes read and the way to public health is set up in the entire state and it's a becomes the obligation of the counties to house them and to make a place for them, it's really not our job. It's your, but it's in our agreement. So then it'd be, how, how, how do you, nobody's asking what's best for public health. That's the question we should all be asking, and what is best for public health? In my opinion, what's best for public health, there's some ways, regulations and design, they shouldn't be under any pressure, they should be your people, they've always been your people. So for you guys to take on the responsibility to house them is wonderful, I think they end up more than. So for you guys to take on the responsibility to house them is wonderful, I think they end up where they probably always wanted to really be. I don't think anyone would have asked them when we signed the agreement. If they really wanted to be our stepchildren. They would have said no, right? And it sounds like from back channels, that they're working, they're trying to get back to mom and dad, and that's fine, I disagree with any of that. But then it comes down to how, how do we? The same taxpayers that put us in our seats and the same taxpayer, you guys in your seats. How do we make this right for the taxpayers? Where, where, where do we get public health doing what public health does for the beautiful suburb of county? I get it, we're in a negotiation, you guys volley over, you send a proposal, the developers are best worked. But I think if we would rewind in time and ask the, the person that donated the land to the Summit Center, it was a five woman C three, all its history. If it's okay if we just give that back to you guys, or give it, give it to you, because it was never yours. It went from the five woman C three to us. That person might not be okay with that, right? And then the same question is with, with proactive, and that's. I said that the little spot, right, because if you want to rewind history, taxpayers built the building, and a business operates in it. And it came over with the transfer agreement, and we really want it? No, we, we're hospital district, but can we see how it's to our advantage to have it? Maybe. So really the question is, do you guys want public health back and how can we figure out? How that works, what does that look like? So for me, from my side of the table, for you guys to say, well, we want our kid back, we want the house and the property. This is a little rough, you know? You know, oh, oh, yeah, and then, and along with your trust too, you can have your trust if you do all that. So it's, I know for all public officials, we're trying to find our way through a place that probably no public official has ever been. But here we are, right, so. Do I, at the end of this meeting, you guys release the funds? I do. But I also understand what a grant is, I understand what the agreement was with the first twenty million dollars and. The grant is no better than three votes, in my opinion, right? Whatever three people can do, three people can undo. Forget that, you've had us on the ropes this entire time. And now you've got three people to undo and three people did it when six, eight years ago. So. I'm going to hope that we can figure out where to have public health, best for public health. That together, we can agree upon the financial situation looks like, but it also honors. Where Summit Center came from and how private it can be. Because just giving up proactive is a domino effect. It's why, it's why we've been struggling with this whole thing, right? If we can, if we can move public health there, well, that's a domino effect, there's a lot of people that go to proactive. And they get the services there, and so then they're, they don't have a problem, and so it's a domino effect, so. The town of Pinedale came in with their, um, it's what it was, it's a proposal, right? It looked really good to us, because we don't unsee people, we honor their agreements, we meet our agreement. Public health as a great new home, yeah, right, is it, is it perfect? No. Town Pinedale finalists sit in there, proposal, they'll meet all the agreements of our agreement. All we can do is hope that they do that to account, right? And, and, right, so this, this leaves your hands, all of it, and it goes over between us and the town of Pinedale. That's your kids, right? We want the best for public health, and I, and I totally understand. They've, they've been your entity all this time. I think they should continue to be your entity in the future, into perpetuity. Because we don't want them back, we want them, we want the best thing that they can do and the best investigation they can do. And I'm about to.
I guess I have a couple, a couple of questions for you guys, and I would like to understand, you know, in, in terms of similar, Jameson has said, like. Based on the proposal that you sent us, do you want to have public health back under you? Is that an important piece of this conversation? And maybe you all.
To me, it is.
Okay.
I think, I think Jameson said about, the parents, the, the responsible, I think it makes it a clean. A clean operation and take care of our kids, right?
Okay.
Use some, use some.
Sometimes that's just, it's a law. That's good.
Based on your proposal, I mean, I was seeing the ducks, kind of the consensus of, of the commission. And I wonder if, you know, from some of your comments, if, you know, the proposal from the town, say, for even a long-term lease, that. I'm sensing from you that you want more of a very long-term, very permanent home for public health. Is that something that's important to you as well?
Right, well, I'd say a little bit, and to. To try to answer, Jameson, I will here. Yes, firstly, I want to see public health under the county. That's where it needs to be, that's what it's always been. When you guys demolished the building up there. I don't know, it's inside there. One ownership, so we speak, if you put it into some places being leased, other than the county being leased, then we've got two ownerships. And so I'd say, I think that what we put together. That probably gives you the money that you want, gets us public health. Be responsible in the future for what we might know, that you got that burden. In this day and age, you, if you, or the building builder, anybody, who knows? How many million dollars to build a three thousand square, six thousand square meter, so we have all the amenities. You know, that, we want to take that responsibility, because at least I do, that we have everything to me. And one more thing, I think, is the nomination, take that on. We want something in trade absolutely, that's what I wanted to talk about, trading this, you trade that, people, we're trying to do. Make this right down to them. You know, that's, yeah, I guess that's okay, well, that's not so good, we're going to give this up to get this. How did it really? And so. In my opinion, what we've done here, try to put it together, kind of, we presented you. Thinking without knowledge, well, your first option. From a wide perspective. To make it fair. From your perspective, if you don't think so, what we need to do, try to hammer out the differences, wherever that's going to be. And, you know, I, I know that, I know some of the requirements for public health, probably. Jive with coming to your thought process, if you understand me. But I do know that it's public health, which, it needs to be in this community, they care about it. So it's best served long-term, I can. That's, that's, that's kind of my take on that, and I'm, you know, I keep telling myself, shut up, but, you know, sometimes you get. Innocent, I'm asleep, because I'm tired too, I'm tired of this whole mess. And I'm ready, I'm ready to make something that will work for both entities. But I'm not giving everything up, I'm waiting on that, it's not going to happen. Got four of the guys setting the table, I think, like you folks, and yet. Where all, you like, can be given, can change every four years, what on, it's on the outcome, mindset. Or something to me, like, I'm training, somehow have to bring that, keep it on. I'm just saying what I want to say, sometimes I do, and I, I'll be back. But yes, my thought process is, keep public health under the county, and I think Mr. White, if something's like I say.
And I think, I mean. My thoughts on that, anyway, property, so I agree with you, proactive is a very vital part of this family, and having pleasure of using that facility for a need replacement, a replacement. Was, was very good, too, there's, there's discussion, no decision being made, but what that property does allow us is the option. We have another little parcel right behind that, that maybe, maybe we build new there and, and proactive stays where it is, and that's all still. Discussion, right? But, um, definitely puts. Public health back under our umbrella. And like Doug said, I think a fairly fair way to do it, and, um. Believe you guys are the terms of this transfer agreement.
Mr. White, I just want to say, I think, from what I'm hearing, it sounds like we all share the same sentiment that public health probably needs to be under the county's. Oversight. I, I think my entire board would probably agree to that. I think some of the hang-up here is regarding properties, you have to understand that some of our, all of our properties are currently collateralized. With our USDA loan. So that's a consideration for us, so we have kind of carved out that, that property at three seventeen Feller and thought, okay, we can. Probably successfully do away with that if we need to, but. You're bringing an entire different piece of property that carries with it some sentimental value, as Jameson alluded to. And that puts us in a bind with collateral and with our financial burdens as well.
I'm always mad about that when we pull down off, people on the offer, and that's two of us. The commissioners can speak for themselves, but I'd be happy to pull that. Parce of three of the Summit Center that bear down on the, of the. Office.
I just had a couple of questions, so I need to dovetail with the proactive piece. And this is why there was the question, there was the taking a subject to the lease, and I was going to ask a question related to that. My understanding of the current arrangement with the tenants in the three seventeen Feller piece is that that is a month-to-month lease. And that they have been notified or not, or that regardless of what happens even prior to this conversation, that. The, that that wasn't a long-term situation for them, that was my understanding, and if that's incorrect, please let me know. And then I guess in, double into that, is there a timeline that, that you all would like to see? That they have enough of a runway prior to any move in the event that the county chose to revamp that building as opposed to build a new one? Is there a timeline?
I think it would be appropriate first to give them as long as possible. At six months. Yeah, and so what was represented to you is they are month-to-month. They are fully aware, obviously, that this is part of the conversation, right, it's been in public. So we've been having conversations with them, our CEO has. But the, the hope from them was to have a long-term lease, we just haven't got there yet because of all of this.
So I guess, when you, can you give me a little bit, maybe this can be an offline conversation for you and me, I'm just curious about. The collateral nature of that situation, because now that's hospital district property at this point.
Correct. With the USDA loan, is that what you refer?
So is that part of asset mix or is it actually collateral?
Go back and look at it.
Yeah, it's complicated. It's complicated.
But I think that what Chairwoman Popman is saying is that. For collateral with the USDA, they cannot afford to do both pieces. But what I hear Commissioner White saying is that both pieces may not be part of the agreement, right? So it's the heartburn over both pieces, that's too much collateral with USDA loan. For the hospital district to even be able to consider it.
But then, if I may interject, it's a compliment, I think. I would be definitely.
Yes.
So I thought the people talking about Sally's, they showed, just, just for the record. There were four and a half of us saying, we don't want that, because of kids, what you said. That Sally switches, if they were to do what she did for the, so. What happened, but I need time to, well, I haven't, and I don't. If you do at all, it means to stay with that, I don't think we need anything, to give any, just the body chain. Some of the body chips, she did that, looking for money, yes. So, so sadly, I'm going to go, I love, because that was, it was, she did so much for that. It's incredibly, I don't know. Yeah, so, it's, it's, we were to go forward. Yeah, but. That to me was, from my perspective, should live in, in the table, that's me personally. Anyway, that's it.
If I can say something, yes, I was not in favor of that, jumping in with this proposal at all, from the very first. And as far as the public health staying with the county, I think, you know, we find a lot, you know, and I think that definitely means it's staying with the county. So those two things are pretty simple. So did you have other proposals or what were we in?
No, just before we presented last week, but this one came in last minute, and you have to understand, it came to us at eleven thirty on Monday night. And we went, okay, this is something that we need to have a conversation about, because not only was it a fantastic offer from the town to try to get us out of a bond. But it, it is important to maintain those relationships and those partnerships, and so. We kind of had to step back and go, okay, you know, we need to consider this and see if this presents differently. We had no idea what, and we're coming to take them, really, until five minutes before we walked in here. And we got a rundown really quickly, so that's, that's all we had to consider, and that seemed like a lot.
But here's, but here's how I feel, you know, uh, we have to represent all the people, to some way or the other, taxpayers. And we gave up some of them, we all agreed to you, okay? So if we don't, we're going to have people that's going to say, we should, okay? So we've got to look at it that way, and I think, I think we did. What you all decide, I don't know, but, you know, I feel like. A lot of people would not be happy if, if we, in the county, for the town property, okay?
Okay.
Including.
I can appreciate that. Am I hearing, though, that, from the commission, that you're willing to remove that extra parcel of land from this proposal? For us to consider?
I should.
I don't care, Sue. I don't want to do this, but a burden idea comes, and sometimes it takes a while, so. What if we inverted it? What if we said, we'll give up the piece, Southwest Summit Center, the south, whatever. And you guys agreed beautifully, landscaped it, and I just come and ran it to the family. And we keep proactive and keep proactive, keep doing proactive things. You guys have a wonderful, well-located spot, so we have the help. Just an idea. Would you offer up some cash with that in account for the building already there? Would you be willing to offer up some cash with that, with the building that? That isn't there, that we would have to build, right, from, from the slot?
We are today, yeah, not at current. Not at current, that's what, that's why we're here, right? That's why we're all sitting around this table.
And to be fair, that's a good way to know. We're all there, we're all there, at least, tax could change, it's changing. So when the transfer agreement was signed between both entities, especially on our side. We were banking on future tax revenues to fill the gap and take care of public health in a way that should be. But the picture has changed drastically for us, you know, you know the numbers, I'm not telling you, you already know. So that puts us in a spot where we don't have the cash out there to build a five million dollar building for public health, it's just not, you know.
Jameson, we're all aware of that. So that's not something that probably was, but maybe, maybe what. Maybe what some folks don't know is, in twenty twenty, my first year on the commission, I've been associated with that, and that, but when you fill the numbers together. And I've heard it from both sides. The county has an investment. Over fifty-five million dollars in good projects, over fifty-five million. Either cash or assets. In, give it to you, same good luck, folks. And so when we talk about, the county is going to be the demise of the hospital, I defer. Six. When we've already been commissioned, taxpayers have invested, has concerned the amount, there's a problem, there are. have invested a concerned amount, there's a problem with the worst. Speeding its stage. We're trying to get down here to the eleventh hour on your target. On us trying to be screwed, especially with my exposure. Because it's important in both. Say, hey, come on. Good job. Don't see that right now. But I think one of our endeavor here is to do it. Is to make this thing come to fruition. You guys and us people, I know. Often, this transfer agreement, which I've read, I can almost tell you the sentence, not quite. But then never gives a give and take on both sides. We've said here, like we said, since inception, this thing a little lot in assets and in cash. That we're willing to make this final check if we were. Or a future cheers. That's an answer. The movement take a lot. It's a box on our shoulders. So where we're at right now is that's the town, what we're up to. He did that part of their building when you were in the county, which I'm guessing you're not. Then I think for me at least, that's not an option. The option is like health. Where the county can down the road meet the obligations that they're gonna give. It's substantial for the area. And why would you guys even want that? You've got enough on your shoulders. You know, absolutely.
You're right.
Yeah, it's huge. And so if you take that part of the puzzle out of your, we can do a public health there. That's not, you know, I'd say, well, it's like we can do something else. We can, we we want it. We want it, we want it with the power. And I guess. Budgetary. So that's where here again, I'm not speaking for everybody, but I think I'm pretty close to what Chris says. We want to get away from here so that when we meet you on the road, we go try to turn it down, then you please, that's my take on it. And I will reverse it. We're all in this thing together. This is the county for heaven's sakes. It's not Los Angeles. Thank goodness for that. So I just want to be able to get this thing taken care of. And the collective is for us, is a team that makes that. And they are the best. Sally Swin, which I'm fine with me, could have. So that's my take on it. I'm not too excited about that.
Well, because it um involves a transfer agreement statement, I feel like I'll go to the executive and consider the proposal, but I guess I'd like to understand very clearly and barely, very formally, if the commission is willing to consider um ending their proposal for us to consider.
We need to know. That's up to you. Do you guys like me that? We need to or just bring one to stream inside one parcel and everything else stays for soon. Everybody can agree on the balance of the commission.
One question I have, um, and I think, Mr. White, I heard you say this, but all other terms that of the transfer agreement are null and void. In exchange for the three seventeen Faler, um the proactive building and and the grass lot or the the roger or what have you. Um, the title insurance will be on the hospital district, no inspections. Um, one thing we haven't discussed is utilities in the temporary space. It's seven hundred dollars a month. Um, and the temporary stay of public health until you're able to build the building or remodel or what have, whatever you end up doing. Is that accurate?
Except the the two of things in the transfer agreement as far as should you guys ever sell assets, we would like write, write your due as well. At eighty percent fair market. And then the other line that means the state statute as far as should the district ever dissolve for whatever reason, all assets get transferred back to the town. Basically, mirror what statute is. That's it.
All right. Well, um, I would like to go into executive by board just to discuss that. But before doing so, we have a lot of public members here, and I had a time set aside on the agenda to allow them to comment. So if you're agreeable to that as a commission, I'd like to open up the floor for public comment, please, before we move into executive. Is that all right? Do you just want to? Anyone from the public wish to speak? Yes, sir.
We're here.
Thank you for being here, sir.
Let me just make sure the mic is on if it just shut up. Yeah, just push it once and it should turn green. If it's red, it should turn.
Very awesome. Patients, I guess.
Hi, um, to introduce myself, I'm a private owner of proactive. Um, big business, productive rehabilitation fitness. Um, just to give my opinion, um, for obviously when you're in a pre-seventeen Faler property, you have been since they're built, um, the privilege of having a facility that is uniquely designed for rehabilitation of all types, um, including a pool that was donated by Sally Swin or somebody. Um, but from our perspective, of course, we want to stay there. So it's been um a great place for our business. People know it's there. Um, it's been a very exciting service to the community and um they have been from the Southwest Center great relationship with the Southwest Center for over thirty years. Um, so we like to become a commission and hospital, of course, take all that into consideration. And that if we, for some reason, we have to move out, we would need a facility. Our perspective is uh the city that is residing there, then we prefer to stay there.
May I reply? What? What you've said is falling on deaf ears. Thank you. It's not falling on deaf ears and it's it's a very difficult problem for all of us to overcome. What you offer is tremendous, your relation, the marriage with the Southwest Center and the medical clinic. I think that if we get things to go through, I'd like to encourage that they make room for you up in the hospital district so you can be right next to the senior citizens and address their needs on a daily basis, along with the a medical clinic and hospital itself, that would be an ideal location for you to communicate right now.
So we've definitely heard and had a lot of discussions, you know, from that that parcel here and auctions that, you know, maybe you have a new neighbor and even looking at stuff that potentially if this still does go through, there's only types scenario. Um, we we realize that uh we're we're potentially displaced and a very important service for the county. Um, and want to assure you that those conversations have already started. So absolutely, if the studies go through, um love to sit down with your partner and discuss any of the options. Eventually could be on the table.
Mr. Heth, just so you know, from the hospital district side, it's been a painful conversation for us as well. I hope you can appreciate that.
Thank you.
You know, in this, um, I just wonder if maybe I think I'm right. Just how many of them is in here? Um. And why are you anticipating that? Whatever decision tonight is payment is hanging on that. Like there has to be a payment. Is that uh, I guess, county commissioner, is there, does there have to be a decision in order for that um voucher to be paid to her?
That is what the uh five members of the commission voted on, yes.
Okay, so then there is no possibility, since you didn't know about this other option. Um, you know, I mean, that's what that's bad and and I mean, I think everybody wants to do the right thing. Um, I'm asking the question. Um, this is obviously a new option. You know, for those of us that go to meetings and have heard also, um. So, you know, I'm sitting here thinking you know, is that a pressure that you put on a board to make without fully both boards exploring this other option possibly? You know, I mean, and maybe you'll come back to the same decision. I don't know. You know, um, but the two point six, I mean, that's that's important. I mean, that's paramount for the hospital district, for the county. You know, um. Now, there are a lot of points here tonight, the business. Um, and the option there, um, so many things, is there any way? And I don't even want to die or over, I don't know if any of that's, but I'm not sure, you know, how even leave here tonight, you know, wow, maybe we should have thought about that a little bit more, or maybe we should have thought, you know? I don't know. I mean, I'm sitting here a little bit confused. You know, uh, honestly, because the Faler property seem like the right thing to me, too. It just seemed to make a lot of sense. But that's all we have. Now, this other option tonight, it makes me think I guess for me, if I was sitting on either one of these boards, thank God I'm not, because I'm super young, but I would not feel very responsible having to make that decision tonight with the fact that this other one hasn't been looked at as closely. And maybe needs to be more. I mean, I don't know. But on the flip side of that, can we get to the point where we can pay this voucher trust one another and say, okay, we got these two things. This is what we agreed to. And now this board has to go back there and decide. I don't know the thing I'm choosing, maybe. So I'm just kind of appealing one more time. Uh, is there any way to pay this money, but have a very clear in all your minutes and stuff that you could have planned on finding out the exactness of the find out option with the town? You know, I don't know. I don't know. I I don't know. I appreciate, I appreciate the uh offer tonight. But honestly, I'm I'm thankful for that, you know? But man, I'd hate to be on even one of these boards going, I'll get here tonight without fully having it for the other option. Thank you.
Man, I'd like to respond a little bit on that. So um in our, in our discussions, I think it it's always come back to the number one thing is the commissioners like to have a public health back under it and solely that under the commission. We think that's the best steps forward. Long term, there was a couple of other options that came to us. Um, that involved long-term lease agreements and made it messy. Um, so we have had discussions about long-term and anything we email, they did us an email today that said that we didn't, it didn't come till one o'clock today, but we did have some discussion on looking at uh the different ownerships, didn't know how the uh the marriage would work between the town and find out and the hospital district and the county commissioners until we got into this meeting here, but we uh could be fully transparent. We have had the discussions and everything that we see ten, twenty years, thirty years, fifty years down. It probably is best that they call that solely under the county commissioner.
The option you, the county can be the town. I have, I mean, maybe the town, I'm going to offer the county.
Again, I think the best is if it didn't have those ties, and I think that was part of our discussion. That we would prefer that they were solely under our option to these other stuff there. So that's why we're calling it option out. I think this is the best steps forward for both the county, public health and uh um long-term. I mean, I really appreciate what the mayor and town find out offer enough, but I think long-term, twenty, thirty years from now, I'd rather not perhaps being one of us be burdened to each other.
Yeah, first, I guess, like the plan you guys were getting together, finding, finding a solution. And I think I think you really have. I think this idea of that piece of property and and my brother, I've been there too with you guys and I and I hope you can stay and I hope you can find a building and build a building frankly for public health. And uh and I just think, uh, I just think this is the right alternative. I do think public health, I've talked to them, I think they want to be with the county. And and I appreciate the find out offer. I think that was pretty awesome. And I think they ought to be thanked by everybody for trying to come up with a solution, whether you entirely like it or not, at least they came to the table. So I think that's a pretty awesome deal. Um, but I do like the idea that um that property goes to back to the county, they release the money. And then hopefully the county deals with some restructure of health on that property. And we still have the ability to use, use this. If not, then is there a way after this agreement, we should find maybe for public, for proactive, you know, in another way. I think you guys are on the right track. Just need to, you know, we did our hard ads on, gosh, I've had mine on one, one or many times. It's just, I guess, step out and move. You know, it's probably this. And I think one way you can look at this and do this is make a, make a proposed deal tonight, right? And then sit and and release the money, make a proposed deal. If you see any faithful flaw in it, right? Lawyers are able to come up with any faithful quality plan, you may have to back out, but I I think uh I think that gives maybe a time to get a breath to look at everything, particularly the lawyers. I mean, that's a very good idea.
Thank you.
Mr. Allen?
I have a couple of questions, but um you might have to make a statement. The first one is I'm excited that everybody here is agreeing that this should go back to the county. And that that is great, that everybody's working together. Fifty million dollars into this project. And I I struggle with two million dollars holding it up. Everybody said let's write the check tonight, let's get moving on. And this other stuff can get figured out. One of the things I struggle with, and I have to ask a question. One of the things I struggle with, and I have to ask the question, how big is the county versus office? The whole thing, how many square feet?
Currently?
Don't know what they want, whether they want build on the U two or what they have.
Six thousand square feet.
Six thousand square feet, how many employees? Let's count the metrics. The county employees have worked with the county for the county government. Is anyone?
Three point five.
Pardon?
Three point five.
Everybody's got a pretty big office, don't they? So it goes back to Mr. James's comment, sounds like the children are spoiled. Uh, that's, that's a huge facility for three people, but that's in the agreement, so let's go. But, but everybody is having good points on all sides about this, but the main thing is we cannot postpone a hurdle to put the hospital further back. We need to get this, we need to get this moving for the people in the county. I, I have several discussions. This is not a golf course. It's not a rowing pool. It's not a walking fair. It's not even a fire. It's a hospital. For everybody, and for young guys like myself, who are going to be used, because so is me. So thank you for your time and your effort, and hopefully you guys can get together.
Thank you as well. Anybody else? Anyone on the agenda?
No one's raised their hand. Uh, I don't know if Mayor Murdoch, looks like he might want to speak.
Mayor Murdoch, are you here? Would you like to make a comment tonight?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I'm in Cheyenne, spending time with our fun friends down here. Stuck in a motel room. Um, you know, I think from my perspective, everything I've heard up until this point, um, again, I, as everybody has said, thank you for everybody working together on this. Um, the town of Pinedale's offer, you know, we can't get the six thousand square feet. Maybe that's a short-term solution till the county builds a new building, uh, but I do think, um, you know, it is going to be the long, it's going to be a much more expensive solution after twenty, thirty years. You know, paying rent to the town is going to be more expensive than actually owning something. So I do agree that eventually owning the building and going there is probably going to be the cheapest and best long-term solution. Uh, but the town is definitely willing to step in if it's a two- to three-year build time and you need to use our space, we can go there. Um, you know, from our perspective, we support the hospital, we want to see it progress. My ask is that the county commissioners would agree to releasing those funds, and let's find a solution as quickly as possible. Um, but in the meantime, you know, we're there to help, and, uh, if you need to tap into us, please give us a call, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, thanks for the generous offer. That's, it is really, uh, the spirit with which it was offered was refreshing, so thank you.
Of course, anytime.
Well, word?
I'm sorry, there's, Jan Lee wants to speak.
Jan, come on.
She raised her hand.
Jan Lee, can you hear us?
Yep, thank you, Tanya. I, I want to appreciate all, appreciate all of you to try, coming together to try to find a permanent home for public health. I realize how difficult these decisions are. I do appreciate everyone's support to put public health back under our state and county contract. And, um, you know, we really appreciate you guys coming up with a plan, because I figure then, you know, we can all move forward and provide healthcare to, to residents for the public health services we provide. The statement to Max's statement, the, the contract attachment be, you know, the six thousand square feet at the time when we were doing all the meetings between entities to come up with the original transfer agreement reflected the building's square footage and the space that was in the previous building. So I hope that clarifies that. Yes. Base for privacy, for, for flowing a lot of people through space, and that just, that contract reflected what was, what was up on the hill before and, um, agreed upon, you know, and with all the entities at the time this contract was, was made. But I do totally appreciate you guys coming together to find a solution for a permanent home. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Appreciate you being here this evening.
I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person. I'm at a regional , uh, nurse meeting. So, um, but yeah, I wanted to, to thank you.
That's okay. We're glad you're on. Remembering another opportunity. It seems we have a potential to consider, so the hospital board may sense first to step into executive very briefly. Someone would like to make a motion to yourself.
Um, Chair would make a motion that we go into executive session briefly to discuss real estate. Also, yeah, give him a promotion in the second, hold a favor, please.
I probably already saying?
Follow this meeting back to order and thank everyone for your patience. We have a lot of in and out this evening, and I'm appreciative that you're all picking with us and hanging out, so thank you. Mr. Commissioners, thank you for your time tonight. We really appreciate your being willing to come sit around the table and help us come to some sort of resolution to the issue that we've been struggling with for several weeks now. So thanks for your time this evening. We appreciate you. Um, and the community partners that you are, we'd like to see that relationship continue throughout to the future, that we work together for the betterment of the residents of the county. So thank you. Mr. Chairman, uh, so if, I just want to make sure very clearly that we're considering the, the correct thing tonight. Um, so in good faith, our board is considering a proposal, the terms of which our attorney will go through here in just a moment. But I would like to understand that the, this is being considered, uh, in good faith also on your, that the commission will release the two point six million dollars once we can, once we can come to some sort of agreement with this proposal tonight. Is that correct?
Yes, that's what we presented. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Ms. Mallory, please go through the terms for the board one more time, just so that we are very clear.
To the chairman, board members, county commissioners, the terms, as I have understood them, to be is that the hospital district will deed over the protracted building in three seventeen Baylor, which also includes the empty lot. That is going to be contingent on financing, our financing partners approval. There are no inspections, which was one of the terms that was proposed by the county. The county is to pay seven hundred dollars per month for utilities at public health's current space. For two years, uh, public health will remain in the temporary space. The hospital district will provide snow removal of the current space that public health is in. Um, the two-year term with the current space, um, is, will be given with the option to negotiate a, an extension. So if you need an extension, um, that's something we can negotiate. Um, we would propose that title insurance be split, not a deal breaker. We can discuss that. Their, um, public health, as well as veteran services, will return back under the county's purview. Um, provision five of the transfer agreement, as well as the provision pertaining to, uh, reversion of the assets if the hospital district were to fail, will also be included in this agreement. I would propose that a written agreement be exchanged between the county and the hospital district within one week, with the county, um, giving it a shot at the first draft. Did I miss anything?
I think we covered our intent quite well. Thank you.
Was the purchase the eighty percent purchase option still there?
Yes, that is the specific provision five within the transfer agreement, so yes.
Entirely about there.
Yes, yes.
So question real quick, where do we go if USDA says no?
Then we'll come back to the drawing board with the commissioners. We don't anticipate it will be an issue, but we just have to make sure that they know, they are fully aware of what we're doing and the actions we're taking, so.
Yeah, we do not anticipate that being a problem, but we are contractually obligated to run it by them. And, and just for clarification, Clayton, since you asked, so provision five within the transfer agreement, um, is the one pertaining to real estate known as Sublet Center that discussed in fact, um, the eighty percent that Mr. White should have the percent.
Any other questions? Mr. Chairman, are you agreeable with the terms as laid out by our little council, that we're all considering the same thing?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right, I will open the floor and change motion at this time.
Madam Chair.
Motion on the table?
I think so.
Questions in seconds. Is there any further discussion on part of the board?
Not on part of the board, but Jan Lee does have her hand raised.
Okay, I'll, okay. Thank you. We have a motion. I'm going to take one a second. Is there any further discussion? Then I will ask for a vote. All in favor of the motion on the table to accept the proposal as needed by the commissioners. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
I would like to
Oh, I'm sorry.
motion within some of the county board commissioners in regards to the, uh, release of the money to the hospital district and the exchange of the property coming back to us is very important.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the voucher to the hospital district in the amount of two million, six hundred sixty-four thousand, two hundred and five dollars and forty-seven cents. Um, with the caveat that, uh, this agreement, um, is worked out and finalized through our wish. Not second, but had motions by Commissioner White, second, that's released today, all right?
It is released today in good faith.
Released today in good faith, that is good. He's still second.
I do second. What's got to happen if we can't? A motion by Ed, second by Commissioner Jekri, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Everyone, thank you. Do you guys need to adjourn your meeting? Like motion to adjourn the meeting for a little, anybody opposed to that? I'll take a second. All in favor, but not opposed. During the day.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioners.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
One, one other thing I would like to make note of, I'm the only one that wore some sort of a tie.
That goes really well with your ball cap, too, no? Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, Jan, if you have a question or a comment that you wanted to make now?
I just wanted to thank all of you for getting this, this plan moving forward and getting this resolved tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Everyone, we have just a couple of items of business further in our meeting this evening. The next of which is electrical change order PCO zero one seven one, that we've all ever provided this first.
And here I have asked Mr. Kitman to jump on, assume it would be
That would be, I was wondering if he was watching.
I actually forgot to answer that. I just did.
Okay, all right. So, uh, some background, I mean, I can give, well, not that I know, my hands, this chapter is, uh, directly related to our escalation of electrical manpower that, hey, the evidence is in the, around the end of last year. This is the first of two. Okay, so, um, I want to make clear though, and Nathan can speak to it when he jumps on, that they cleaned out allowances in all of their lineages to help cover the cost of used change in your, so. Which that background, and if anything even happened, I think he's on. Okay, Nathan, are you there?
I'm here, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thanks for jumping on. Um, we're just addressing the PCO one seven one, uh, the electrical escalation for manpower, electrical manpower. Do you have anything you would like to say? Do you have anything you would like to say to the board as we consider this change order approval?
Um yeah, so if you all remember, we met in December and January, I think in the January uh Marbleton meeting, we discussed uh potentially escalating uh Premier in in their manpower to get that work done uh due to the delays with the switch gear and and some of those changes that had to be made. So what we did was we tracked that change. Um it like, like you said, it is in two parts. Uh it's split up by the two vendors that that we were able to procure. So the one you have in front of you tonight, I believe, is three hundred right? Um that is for uh the manpower escalation from January to May uh for the original company that we were able to secure. And all the backup that you have there should be should be provided. Uh I went through all of their change order documents and their time sheets and their labor and Sean and I both vetted that pretty heavily. And I also created a spreadsheet there to show the uh individual weeks and the labors that were provided and what that surplus manpower was. I just wanna be clear. What you're looking at and what you're approving is just the overtime and the escalation cost for that subcontractor. So what that means is Premier uh carried the the base rate for them that was in their contract, which was a hundred dollars an hour for for each of these guys. And then we agreed to uh pay the overtime or the escalation, which was you know, dependent on on what it was. I think it was fifteen dollars an hour for their normal time. And then somewhere around fifty-five dollars an hour for their overtime. So there is a spreadsheet in there you can look at that shows from January to May and the hours that they worked that were escalation hours adding up to the three hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Thank you, Nathan. Does anyone have any questions? Uh on this.
So since the total is zero, that's nothing's coming out of contingency.
Yeah, so so actually, we like like we had discussed all along, we had some some monies that we were able to get the USDA to approve for us to shift around to cover not only this uh but the the second of the two change orders to to cover this on our side. So.
Okay. And so you are saying that you'll you'll be able to cover the second one as well?
Uh yeah, that I mean, that's that's the plan. Um we've we've talked to them. We know what the hours are. We moved uh an estimated cost based on what we thought that cost would be. And so we're waiting for the rest of those hours to come in so that we can generate that second change order. But as it looks right now, uh we carried a little more than what we thought it would be so that we could make sure to cover that that hit, you know, on our side of of the project. So.
Okay. Thank you, Nathan.
I'm sure. Yes, I think it's important to understand, um this is a very difficult thing to do to keep us on track. And I'm very appreciative of how hard Leighton has worked uh to make it happen. I know Nathan personally has worked very hard too to move those allowances around and so forth so that we weren't having to cover that in addition to. So very appreciative for how this all shook out. It's kind of a scary thing. Um but imperative to keep us on track. So. I would second that. Um the alternative may be months, like months. So they worked really hard and we very appreciate as well.
Yeah, I just I just want you all to know, um like Lena said, I've I've really been working behind the scenes since probably November, knowing that this was coming to make sure that we were able to help and 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 take some of this in the project and moving things around to make sure that we could do that because we all knew what the situation was with uh the owner contingency and some of the things that had to be paid for, some of the buyout items that had to be picked up on your side. And I know that there's been times in the past where we've offered to take, you know, some some items on our side of the project and uh the this was a big one and we we did, we we worked really hard on making sure that we could take this uh at the end and and uh, you know, be a good partner to you guys. So um we we think right now that we've assumed most, if not all, of that hit um to get this scope of work done. And and like Tanya said, you know, it 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 really stood to impact the project. So I I do appreciate um you know, we've we've come to you guys a couple of times throughout the project and said, hey, we we've got these concerns and this is what we'd like to do. And you have afforded us the um the, you know, the ability to sort of manage the project from that standpoint, if you will. So I we do appreciate that and and we do intend to help you know, incur most of that that hit. So thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Would you like to take action on these change orders?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we approve change order PCO zero one seven one.
On table? In a second. Any further discussion questions from the board? All right, I'll ask for a vote then. All in favor of the motion to approve PCO zero one seven one, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Chair, I would like to abstain. My vote abstention noted. Thank you, Taylor. Motion carries. Aye is on one extension. Uh next item, thank you, Nathan, for jumping on. We appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you all very much.
Next item on the agenda is the steward easement for the town of Plandale. Is is for uh the sewer extension that we had to put in earlier last summer, I would say. Um so leaving requirements and the ask from the town of Plandale, this easement is to allow them to maintain that line since it's on our, you know, it's our sewer line. So this has already been approved by the town of Plandale, and this is just a formality for who belongs are in, to submit to them. Anyone have any questions about it? It needs a couple of edits from what you see. Obviously, our legal counsel makes changes here. So. Are these the only edits that will be made on this?
Sir, peace, man.
Jameson, I'll second. Um thank you. We have a motion by Jameson second by Taylor to approve the steward utility easement. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify so.
Aye.
Any opposed? She carries. If that sign even sent off to the town. And with that, we are at the end of our public business. We do have um some personnel, a personnel issue we need to discuss in the executive session. So I would ask for the board to make a motion to move into executive one last time this evening to go through terms of executive nature and afterwards. Madam Chair, make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss executive personnel. Thank you, Ashley.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Thank you. Thanks all for your time. Uh I don't anticipate us to have any action here. Love you, but not that much. Baby. Let's chat tomorrow with this guy, sir. You'd be nice to bodyguard. Just like.